I will also check. If Boone is coming.
Okay. Okay, so we are now live. We're gonna go ahead and wait just a little bit. I'm gonna go ahead and let them in and then just ask them to turn their camera off and then also give them time to rename themselves because there's a few people that looks like their names are not on there. Hello candidates, my name is Catalina Theodoros. I am the administrative assistant. I'm gonna give a few of you some time to go ahead and rename yourself so that we can see your full name here on Zoom. And then I'm also gonna ask that at this time, everyone turn their camera off. When it is your turn to speak during the interview process, we'll ask you to turn your camera back on. And if anybody has any questions about that, I am monitoring the chat. So go ahead and put your questions there. Thank you. I do see a phone number here. Can you go ahead and unmute yourself and let me know who you are? And that way I can rename you from my end. It's a 626 phone number. Go ahead and repeat that. I see somebody's calling in from a phone. If you could identify yourself so I can rename you here in the Zoom room. Yourself, let's see. I did request you to unmute.
I think I just managed to work a Zoom phone interface. Yay. Hi, this is Renee Amy.
All right. Thank you, Renee. I'm gonna go ahead and put your name in.
Okay, thank you. Yeah.
Okay, Camila, for everyone that's here, it looks like we've got everyone's name. I don't think we have all the candidates here. But if you'd like, you can go ahead and start the meeting.
Hey, can you hear me? Okay. All right, good. Good evening, everyone. Good evening, trustees. Sending special hugs and shout outs to all of you. Altadena love. I will call this meeting to order at 5:35 and I will start with the land acknowledgement. The Altadena Library District acknowledges its presence on the traditional ancestral and unceded land of the Gabarino Tongva peoples. Altadena is located on the stolen homeland of the Haamanga tribal band. The traditional territory of the Gabarino Tongva is referred to as Tabongar, which includes the areas currently known as sorry, Los Angeles County, Riverside County, West Amberdino County, parts of Orange County, as well as the four Southern Channel Islands. Entities such as the US government and non-native settlers have subjected the Gabarino Tongva peoples to historic and continuing injustices, including genocide, forced displacement, and cultural and linguistic erasure. Altadena commits to learning, educating, and informing its staff, residents of and residents of present-day Altadena about the rich histories, vibrant communities, and culture of the Gabarino Tongva people present and past through our collection development, resources, and program offerings. Okay, I will next go ahead and do a roll call vote. And Catalina, you have to tell me if there's something I need to do different because we're online versus in person.
We're conducting everything as we usually do in person.
Yeah, okay. So trustee Capel?
Here.
Trustee Clark?
Yeah.
Trustee Lim? I think he disappeared. We see, we saw him, but then he left. Well, I am here and we'll wait for Boone to come back on. Next, I will ask if there is any request to change any agenda items and if not, a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
And all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. All right, Catalina, is there any public comment on non-agenda items?
I do not have any public comment. I do want to take a moment, though. I see there's a participant that joined that is named Dodger Fan. If they could please rename themselves so that we know which so we know who you are. Thank you.
All right. Okay, next on our agenda is our new business. We have two items, first being the review and approval of Resolution 2025-01 to make findings relating to a declared state of emergency and authorize remote teleconference meeting of the legislative bodies of the Altadena Library District for the period of January 23rd through March 9th. Is there any presentation needed or discussion? Okay.
Camila, can I just, I mean, kind of a piece of this, but I you know, it's in, I think we're all in a very weird spot. You know, I'm personally temporarily living quite a long ways away. I think it would be good. I doubt it can happen for Monday, but at our February meeting, if we could just have some legal insight, just just start thinking a little bit more long-term, you know. I, you know, I don't think any of us have any idea when even a majority of this board will be able to live in the district again. And I don't know what the legal implications of that are because there's, that's most of the community at this point, and I don't know what that means as far as the board is concerned. It would just be good if we could just start getting a grasp of that. You know, hopefully by like the February board meeting.
That's a great point. Catalina, do you, oh, go ahead, Nikki, look like you're gonna say something?
Yeah, I'm gonna make a note. We are meeting with our attorney tomorrow about other things. So Katie and I will be meeting with him and I'll make sure to bring that up as well as a point of clarification.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Thank you. Okay, if there's no other discussion, can we have a motion to approve the resolution as stated?
So moved.
Second.
And all in favor, say aye.
I think virtually we have to do a roll call vote, by the way.
I was thinking that, that's, yeah, I was gonna, yeah, that's, that was what I was referring to when I asked that question. So
Yes.
Okay, trustee Capel?
Aye.
Trustee Clark?
Aye.
And that is a aye vote for me. Has Boone rejoined us somewhere in the Zoom world? Yes, he has. He's here. Okay, trustee Lim? Maybe he's having technical difficulties.
Can you hear me?
I hear you.
Yes, I, I missed the first part of the discussion. Was there a discussion about extending the timeline?
No, there wasn't a discussion about extending the timeline, but Jason did bring up consulting with an attorney about the long-term legal ramifications of none of us living in the district as of right now. So Nikki is going to take that to the attorneys. There's a meeting with them. I don't remember when, just that fast, but she will take that to the attorneys to review.
Perfect, thank you.
Okay. All right, thank you very much. Okay. All right, moving on to our big new business is a review of Altadena Library District Board of Trustees vacancy applicants and recommendation for an appointment. So the way that this is gonna go, let me get to that section of the notes. Catalina, do you want to give an overview or shall I just go forward with that?
I can go over it if you like. And then I also have the list of candidates that we're gonna go through. So I'll go ahead and cover the process. So all applicants have been invited to attend this meeting. They will be given three minutes to speak about themselves and otherwise use the time as it relates to their interests in the trustee appointment. They will also ask to be three questions by the board. All applicants are asked the same questions. They'll also have three minutes to answer these. Then there will be a discussion amongst the trustees. A trustee after discussion can make a motion to proceed to a roll call vote on an appointment for a particular candidate. After receiving a second, the president will open up the floor for further discussion and debate and a roll call vote will be taken. One applicant must receive a majority vote, so three out of five trustees to be selected. If one applicant does not get three votes, the floor will again open up for discussion. And this step is repeated until a candidate is selected that receives at least three of the four votes from our trustees. And I do have the list here. So whenever you're, you're ready to move forward with questions, Camila?
Okay.
I do have, oh, go ahead.
I was gonna ask, we did talk about Catalina and I, each of the trustees asking a question. I will, I can ask them to introduce themselves and we'll go candidates, candidate by candidate, but I did want to welcome the trustees to ask each of the candidates one of the questions and if you have one that you feel strongly about, we can, you know, we can assign them to you. What would you like to do, trustees? Or if you like, I can ask all of them.
I just, I don't think it matters a whole bunch. It's the same questions for everybody. I just think we should be consistent. So probably whoever's asking question two should always ask question two and so on and so forth. I'm happy to do one of them. That's fine.
Yeah, I would just say go ahead and assign.
Okay, so I'll sign them by my screen. Jason, you're one. Katie, you would be two and Boone, you would be three, question three. And do y'all have the questions good? You can see them, okay?
Yeah.
Okay. All right. And then Catalina, do you have an order for us?
I do have an order. So the first candidate that I have on my list is Ray Ruffin.
Okay, and then Catalina, will you be managing the time?
I
Yes, I will. Sorry, I muted myself.
Okay. All right, great. So hello, Ray. I want to give you three minutes to speak about yourselves or otherwise use the time as it relates to your interest in the trustee appointment. And then our existing trustees will ask you our three questions. So you may begin.
Sure. So number one, thanks for the time. I know it's it's challenging right now for a lot of people. So I do appreciate you guys making the time, but my name is Ray Ruffin. I've lived in Altadena for five years, but there was also a stint of about two before I moved to Pasadena for one little break, but married, been married for almost 10 years, have two young sons, which really draws me to the library. I know the library's been important for me as a kid and my son, my oldest is four and my youngest is one. So I want them to have an interval place to learn, educate themselves, and get connected to the community. But in regards to me professionally, I'm what they call a relationship manager. So I network a lot for my bank and build relationships with financial institutions and other developers and nonprofits throughout Southern California. So I focus a lot on nonprofits and developers that are trying to fight homelessness. So a lot of the homeless developments that you see in LA have either financed or referred those for financing. Before that, I used to be a derivatives trader when I lived in New York City. So I've been in the financial industry for a while. But in regards to number one, my interest in the library is, for me, it really is about community. And also the viability of the library, you know, dating myself, I'm I'm above 40, but not at 50 yet. So for me, the library was key in a lot of stuff that I did. And I feel like a lot of kids now with the advent of a technology and the advent of the internet and information being so readily available, I feel like the library's kind of forgotten. And I really wanna have children specifically come back and then even the community come back to the library as a central source. And also I think now given the times that, you know, our community is facing, the library is key. I mean, it's gonna be an integral part in bringing back some spirit to the community. Connecting people again, providing resources, I think, you know, now more than ever, the library is definitely needed. So I think the strength of the library, the strength of the district, that's really driving me right now. One other thing about myself, I'm a board member with the Altadena Library Foundation. So I've already kind of started that transition to getting involved and wanting to have to see the library do better. So for me, it's, I'm kind of all in. But that's kind of like my little elevator speech. Other than that, fun fact about me, I'm related to a temptation. I'll let you guys figure out who. I get that question a lot by my last name. And I should have tested for my black belt in Taekwondo last week, but I'm gonna push that out to probably March. So that's a and I'm not being a dad, that's how I stay in shape.
Nice, thank you. All right, Jason?
Hi, good evening, Mr. Ruffin. So the first question. Trustees are public officials who prepare for, attend, and participate in scheduled board meetings, perform committee work, and attend library and civic events. How do you plan to balance your life and other demands of your time with these obligations?
It's kind of, you add it to the list, really. For me, a big part of what I do professionally is either I'm at different charitable events or different meetings for work, and then I have, my oldest son is four, so he's starting to get involved in activities now. And for me, if I have notice, I can prioritize and rank and file responsibilities. I just need notice to kind of get it all set up, but it's kind of my norm. And for me, it's, you know, I'm really big now on filtering out a lot of the fluff and prioritizing what's important. So this would be the important category.
Great, thank you.
All right, I've got the second question. Hi, Ray, good to see you again.
Likewise.
What library programs and services do you personally use and value and why?
So the thing that I would like to use is the more of the kids' storytime telling and the baby storytime telling from specifically for my two sons. But the one thing that I use and I really like is the Hoopla app for the, for the audio. I didn't know when I signed up that it was that extensive. There's a good selection that's there. And that's just really great outreach for the library. The one thing that I tried to use, I was really curious about the vending machine of books, especially essentially the one at Prime Pizza, and I couldn't get it to work, but I think that, you know, with Hoopla, it gives you connectivity to the library, right, from afar? And with the hope that essentially people might come in more to kind of see more of the programs that are offered, but those are my go-to.
Hi, Ray. The third question is outreach and engagement of the community is vital, especially with the as we recover from the devastation of the fire. As the library approaches closure to mean as well, how would you serve as an ambassador to the district? And this includes other public agencies, support groups, partners, and anything else you have in mind?
You know, I kind of thought about that individually. You know, you can advocate for the library, but you know, I really do that individually and also collectively through the Library Foundation, being a board member. You know, a big part of what we do is fundraising and help support some of the programs that are there. You know, we've had one meeting to date, we were scheduled to have one. Ironically, I think it was the day after the fires happened. And topics of conversations have been, you know, centered around fundraising. You know, Taste of Dean is one of the big things that we do. There were some, we've had conversations along that. I'm on the finance committee, so I'm really vested in trying to figure out ways to fundraise and also just supply money that would come in to support the library. So I really feel that my involvement, being a board member through that foundation, has really put me in a position or it forces me to advocate for the libraries. That's essentially what the role is, right? We're there to support the library. So that is the biggest thing. And individually, I've always been a big promoter of any library, just because I I see the value for community there. But yeah, I think the foundation has been my go-to in my involvement.
Thank you.
Sure.
Thank you so much, Ray. Appreciate you being here.
Thank you.
Questions, thank you. Stand by.
Sure.
Okay, Catalina, who do we have next?
Next on our list is Sandy York.
Okay, hi, Sandy. We're going, are you there? You can turn on your camera so we can see you. There you are.
There we go, I got it.
Hi there. Hi. So as we did before, we offer you three minutes to introduce yourself and share with us your interests in the library and then our trustees will ask you our three questions.
Sure. I've been an Altadena resident with my husband and two kids for eight years. My husband and I have been together for 22 years and married for 12. We have a three and a six-year-old. Our oldest went to Odyssey North. Oh, sorry. Um. I'm an occupational therapist by trade. I work at White Memorial in East Los Angeles and Adventist Health Montebello. And I'm also a home health occupational therapist. And I know that sounds like a lot, but I only work per diem, so I don't work more than 20 hours a week. And I really set my own schedule based on my kids' needs and their pickup and drop-offs from school. I've, I'm also very involved in my youngest daughter's preschool in South Pasadena, which is called Onyanta. I've been a board treasurer and on the executive board for the past three years. Let me see what else. And now I'm drawing a blank on what else to tell you about myself. I love to read, even brought my, my book to the board meeting, just in case I needed it. And yeah, now I'm drawing a blank.
No worries. Jason, would you like to ask your first question?
Sure. Appreciate you still being here with us tonight, Sandy. So first question, trustees are public officials who prepare for, attend, and participate in scheduled board meetings, perform committee work, and attend library and civic events. How do you plan to balance your life and other demands of your time with these obligations?
I actually have a wonderful support system. My husband was the one that encouraged me in the first place to pursue the Board of Trustees position, which I planned on doing for the November 4th election, but then I got the massive packet of paperwork and had a week to fill it out and I wasn't able to do it on time. But my husband is 100% behind me in supporting me with the volunteer work that I do. And my parents are also very supportive. I'm actually living with them while we're evacuated from our home until we can return next month. So I lean very heavily on my support system of my parents and my husband. And I also will decline work if my other obligations need me and I'm okay with that.
Thank you.
Hi, Sandy. Okay. What, what library programs and services do you personally use and value and why?
The very first program that we ever used was Storytime at the Bob Lucas branch with oh, sorry. Librarian Diane. When my daughter was, my oldest was three months old. And Storytime was a great opportunity for me to get out of the house because I can't be a stay-at-home parent. I realized that very early on. And that was just a way to connect with other people in my community. And I used Storytime at the main library as well with my current three-year-old until the summer when she started preschool four days a week. We would go to Storytime every week with Heather as well. So for the last six years, Storytime has been our go-to with the library.
Thank you so much.
Hi, Sandy. Outreach to and engagement with the community is vital, especially as Altadena community recovers from the devastation of the Eaton Canyon fire. And as the library approaches closure of the main library for renovations, how would you serve as an ambassador for the district? This might include other public agencies, other support groups, community partners, and any other things you have in mind.
I truly believe as, as a member of the board, it's important to show up to any events that the library is hosting because the community really needs support, especially at this time. And I truly value the, the library and its goals and serving the community. Literacy is important. We're there, we were there every week when the library was open. And I believe in continuing that commitment to the library.
Thank you so much, Sandy, for being here and sharing with us and answering the questions. We appreciate you.
Thank you for your time.
Yes. Okay, Catalina, who do we have next?
Yes, next we have Justin Maramas. And Justin, please correct me if I'm saying that incorrectly.
Hey, yeah, very close. Justin Maramas. Appreciate the try. No one's ever gotten it.
Thank you.
Hi, Justin. So as you've been hearing, you have three minutes to introduce yourself and then our trustees will ask you our questions.
Yeah, no, thank you. Appreciate everyone being here tonight. I'm, I'm Justin Maramas. I have lived in Altadena for two years. Originally from the East Coast, Pittsburgh, Pennsylvania. My wife is from Northern California, is in the animation industry down here. So that's how I ended up in California, but lived on the west side for about a decade prior to moving up to Altadena. I'm a, I'm a land use attorney by trade, so do a lot of entitlement building work, California Environmental Quality Act work. And one of the first projects I ever got to work on was actually Arts Center College of Design in Pasadena, entitling their their new campus. So I got a lot of time up in Altadena and Pasadena and were avid outdoors people. So got to hike a lot, spent a lot of time in Eaton Canyon before moving over to that area, a lot of time up on Mount Wilson. So just, you know, loved the area and had the wonderful opportunity to move here two years ago. I obviously think that, and I just want to start out by saying, I think that, you know, a lot of people have talked about library as a pillar of the community, something that's going to be necessarily needed for everyone moving forward to be, to strengthen the community, to continue to grow the community and the services for the community. I think it's just a testament to the fact of Altadena and the library itself that we have 10 applicants here tonight who are still willing to show up two weeks now after everything that happened. It just speaks volumes for what not just the library means to the community, but what the community means to the community. It just speaks volumes for what not just the library means to the community, but what the community means to the community and the fact that. We still have two intact library buildings, um, and one currently going through renovation, the other one just having its initial study released. And gonna be going through that process over the next year. Um, I think there's nothing more important than making sure that those services are expanded and solidified in a way that's going to. Help the community build around it moving forward. Um, so that's really my focus with the library, especially now. I was already interested in it, I will say because it's sort of a, um. A, a two-year, um, position, I was really interested in sort of the moment in time of the library district going through. Uh, the, both the entitlement process for the main library as well as the, the construction for Bob Lucas, because that's. What I do, I feel like I can bring sort of a lot of expertise to what can be a very complicated and arduous process in California. Um, so I'll, I'll stop there, I'll, fun fact about me, have a German shepherd named Cedar. Who's four years old, who we love to death, who can't wait to get back to Altadena, uh, coming on hiking trails, but.
Thank you so much, Justin. Alright, Jason.
Alright, uh, so thank you for joining us, so question number one. Trustees are public officials who prepare for, attend and participate in scheduled board meetings. Perform committee work and attend library and civic events. How do you plan to balance your life and other demands of your time, uh, with these obligations?
Yeah, well, I think it's, it's twofold and I appreciate the question. The, the first is, you know, it, my. Schedule is hectic in the first place, um, so it is about prioritizing and I think right now there's nothing more important to prioritize than the community. Um, the second part of that twofold piece is that my job, while it can be very intense, um, I'm lucky enough to work for a law firm. Who really values both pro bono work and volunteer work, um, so the stuff that I am committing to. As something that's sort of personally important to me is going to be supported on the work side. So if I need to shuffle schedules around to make meetings, to make community events, to be part of the community and volunteer, that's something that I know is going to be a hundred percent supported. Um, regardless of what the rest of my schedule looks like, so I'm comfortable knowing that I'll be able to prioritize in a way that, um, benefits the library.
Great, thank you. Katie?
Hi Justin, um, so I wonder if you can tell us what library approaches services you personally use and why?
Yeah, so I don't, I don't know exactly what the, the word for it is, but the thing that I've been most impressed with is. Being able, myself and my wife, being able to reach out to the library for any, any book, any material, source material that might not be in the library. And not just requesting that it be ordered, but actually being able to order it ourselves. Having it delivered via Amazon or whoever the retailer is to our house and then taking it to the library. Being able to just know and I've never had anything rejected from the library either, knowing that I don't have to go out of the Altadena system to really get what. We need, yeah, I see interlibrary loan, I'm not sure it's a loan though, they're actually purchasing it for the Altadena library, right? So is it a, it's, it's just buy it, send it to our house and then take it to the library when we're done, um. Uh, the, the one thing of the library and service I think should continue to be expanded, um. That I haven't had a chance to use yet is the, the loaning out of equipment, especially things for the outdoors. I think that that's really important for a community, um, some individuals of which may have lost a lot of that stuff. Some individuals who don't have the opportunity or the means to really take advantage of certain equipment that, um, really allows you to explore. Altadena and our surrounding national forests, so I think expanding that as a library, the main library gets constructed and renovated. Bob Lucas Library constructions completed is, is important and probably at the top of my list.
Awesome, thank you. Yeah, it's called our patron initiated purchase program and it rules. Um, I'm glad you're using it, it's very cool.
Thank you, Justin. Uh, outreach to an engagement with the community is vital, especially as the Altadena community recovers from the devastation of the Ink Canyon Fire. And as the Altadena Library approaches closure of the main library for renovations, how would you serve as an ambassador for the district? This might include other public agencies, other support groups, community partners, and others you have in mind.
Yeah. Um, I, I'll say just sort of as a initial matter, right? My job is probably fifty percent engaging with whether it's public agencies, planning departments, government officials, supervisor's office. Um, and a lot of time at homeowners association meetings, a lot of time at neighborhood council meetings, town council meetings. So all of that work I think filters into the work that I would be doing on behalf of the library. Um, the other component to that is just how important it is to message what the library is doing and. How the library is supporting the community as we go through this process, right? I think it was important before the fire, especially given the construction projects that are going to be going on and making sure people, I know that, you know. There's a chance that there will be a time when, uh, Bob Lucas isn't quite completed. Main library may be taken down, so there's a chance for overlap and I think the communication for how individuals in the community can get, um. The, the resources that they need is important. I think it's more so important now that we're gonna have a lot of community members who need support, that are gonna be going through and in various stages of. Cleaning their properties, reconstructing their properties, all while also trying to keep in touch with the library, understand what's going on with that construction. Understand sort of how the overall community is being shaped, um, over the next couple of years. And that outreach is paramount, whether it's on an individual basis with community members in a public forum. Or with your government officials.
Thank you.
Thank you guys for your time, I appreciate it.
Thank you so much, Justin, for being here and sharing with us. Okay, Catalina, who's up next?
Uh, next we have, uh, Susan Tripp Mosman. And please correct me, Susan, if I also may have said that incorrectly.
Uh, you said it correctly.
Hi Susan.
Hello, Camila.
Welcome, um, as you've heard, you have three minutes to share about yourself. And then our trustees will ask you some questions.
Okay, sounds good. Uh, first, I really appreciate the board having this special meeting in the midst of all that's going on in our community. And with some of you personally, who I understand lost your homes in the fire. I'm really saddened, uh, for your losses and also the losses in our community. Um, and, uh, for me, I think that, uh, this has motivated me even more to commit to this community. And be a part of the recovery process, whether it's in this capacity as a trustee. Or in another capacity, if, if that's, uh, ends up being the decision. Um, a little about myself, I am a homeowner and a longtime resident of Altadena since nineteen ninety-three. Except for a stint of about six years when our, our family rented a home in La Cressena. Um, and then we rented our home here. Um, I have five adult children, three of whom still live with me. And a very social black cat who adopted us about a year ago. Um, I'm a licensed marriage and family therapist and I work. As the campus therapist for an elementary school in the Montebello Unified School District. Um, my interest in the library Board of Trustees is that I've been a consumer of library resources since I was little. Growing up in my hometown of Tucson, Arizona. Um, I was an avid reader and kept my mom busy with trips to the library. And also as a mom of five myself and as a homeschooler for a time, I heavily relied on. The amazing kid programs at the library in and around LA County and I have several library cards at multiple city and county libraries. Um. And, um, I also was thinking about, uh, the fact that as a young adult, I became more aware that the library was. Much, much more than a place to borrow books or do research or find a quiet place to study or use a copy machine. Um, I noticed that, um, the very compassionate librarians, uh, provided. Uh, resources to houseless men and women while I was using the library, um, often allowing them safe and quiet space to rest. I found community services provided in the form of passports to financial education, to yoga, to town hall gatherings. Um, and all kinds of groups using the library as a community hub and a place to gather. Um, specifically about the trustee position, several years ago, I was on a leadership board at my church. And I had the opportunity to experience, uh, structured meeting style. And work on vision statements and guide the strategy of how to accomplish that vision and. Make staff and budgetary decisions and I really enjoyed that opportunity and being. Okay, yeah, okay, thank you.
We, thank you, Susan. We will go next to you, Jason.
Sure, uh, thanks for being with us, Susan. So question number one. Trustees are public officials who prepare for, attend and participate in scheduled board meetings. Perform committee work and attend library and civic events. How do you plan to balance your life and other demands of your time with these obligations?
Yeah, um, well, I, um, maybe I'm an odd duck, I'm not sure, I'm, I think I'm in good company here. But I do enjoy board meetings and committee work. So, um, as far as life balance, in the past year with a, a bit of a less demanding job, I've found myself with. Um, quite a bit more time on my hands and I was already searching for. Um, an opportunity that was in alignment with my desire to dig deeper into this community and give back. So, um, as I mentioned, I now have adult kids, so I have quite a bit more free time to attend to things that are important to me. So, uh, the work-life balance, uh, it seems like a really good time for me to, um. To, to be a part of the, the community.
Great, thank you. Katie?
Hi Susan, um, can you tell us a little bit, uh, what library programs and services do you personally use and value and why?
Yeah, there are so many programs and services that I've used over the years. Um, currently I enjoy borrowing books, um, as particularly on my current craft, which is macrame. Um, I also really highly value, I use Libby pretty much every day and enjoy the audiobook format. Um, and I feel that, uh, ha- having these, uh, types of resources. Um, really helped me, um, it helps me in my job, I get quite a few resources. Um, regarding my profession, um, I get quite a few political books, so I can stay on top of things, um, in that realm. And, um, I've also, um, I highly value the children's programs, which were a lifesaver to me. Someone else mentioned earlier, um, as a young mom, it allowed me and my kids to. Uh, get outside the house and for my kids to experience a world outside of their own experience. Um. And I really value all the interactions with the library. Um, I feel that the library staff in every library that I've gone to has been very supportive and open and. Um, so, yeah, those are some reasons why I really value the library system.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Hi Susan.
Hello.
Outreach to an engagement of the community is vital, especially as the Altadena community recovers from the devastation of the Ink Canyon Fire. And as the library approaches closure of the main library for renovations, how would you serve as an ambassador for the district? This might include other public agencies, other support groups, community partners, and others that you have in mind.
Well, this is one of the aspects of, of being on this board that I was not initially aware of, but I'm very motivated to participate in and. Um, you know, if I'm able to receive the trustee position. Uh, some of the gifts that I hope to bring to an ambassador role for the district would include, um. Being a trained listener in my profession, I think that would be important with public agencies and as being an advocate for our area. Um, I do have a bit of experience, uh, in fundraising on a personal level where I raised funds for clean water. So I, I feel that that's a strength that I've cultivated and in being able to communicate. Um, a need and bring people together to support a cause. Um, and then lastly, I'm a creative, um, think outside the box type of person. And I would hope to bring that energy to my role in interacting with the, with those in the community who have needs. That the library system might be able to meet. And, um, I feel that maybe the way that I interact with people. Uh, will put people at ease and feel heard, um, because I am genuine in trying to support others' needs and visions.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you so much, Susan. Thank you for being here.
Thank you for having me.
Stay tuned, Catalina.
Next we have, uh, Renee Amy.
Hello Renee.
Hi, can you hear me?
We can hear you, but we can't see you.
Yeah, I, I apologize, I'm on my cell phone, uh, my, uh, uh, video, uh, capabilities, um. Just appeared with a fire and I simply haven't replaced them because, hey, too many other things going on. Uh, in the community to kind of waste time on that, so.
Okay.
I apologize for that, but it, it can be, that can be replaced.
Absolutely. Thank you for being here in the capacity that you are able to be. Um, so, uh, as you have heard, you have three minutes to introduce yourself and share with us your interest in that. Trustee position and then our trustees will ask you their questions.
Sure, and I'll, I'll just get rocking and rolling here as I tend to do, uh, I would ask that you, uh, pardon me. Um, um, discount any apparent brain fog, as they say, because these have been very tough days for us all. And obviously very tough days for the Altadena Library District. Um, I will say that, um, as a bit of a precursor for many of you. Who are unaware of my, uh, efforts, uh, regarding this particular trustee position. I, I'm gonna be wrong on this, I know, but essentially for the last decade, uh, every time as such a position has been, uh, become available. And it's been numerous times, I've thrown my hat into the ring, um, pre, pre, um. Pre any of you serving on the board by a number of years. Uh, so I am extremely familiar, uh, with both the governance of the Altadena Library District and, um, its history. Uh, which has been problematic in the past and which is about to be more challenging than ever in its history. I will say that, um, about two days ago, I had a chance to briefly focus on the issue of the ALD. And it was at that point that it was sort of an oh my god moment. Um, no one so far has mentioned the fact that the ALD relies on the property tax revenue. Uh, to keep its services available and two or three days ago, that OMG moment hit. Um, and that was confirmed today, uh, by Director Winslow over at the Altadena, uh, at the Altadena Rotary Club meeting. Uh, about what a challenge that's going to be. Um, again, my, my knowledge and understanding of this and myriad other issues facing the ALD. Probably as greater than that of anyone else, um, uh, on this, uh, list tonight. Simply because of my long-term involvement and interest in the district and the, the issues it faces. As you see on my resume, I'm a practicing licensed attorney, I'm a licensed general contractor. Um, I've been involved in the community, um, for more than, I, I don't know how long, okay? I, I still consider myself a newcomer because I've only lived either in Altadena or nearby for about forty years. I've been involved in myriad, uh, issues and typically at the forefront of many. Um, among other things, you know, that, well, not many people know it, but the banner across the front of Grocery Outlet. The Altadena Strong, We Will Rebuild, um, I, I don't mean to crow or anything else, but that was me. Uh, and I've had the great opportunity in recent days since the fire to, um, promote. Uh, Altadena and the wondrous place that it was, both locally and globally. Um, so I feel that, uh, with all my activities and contacts within the community. I am sort of in a unique position to actually, I hate to have said, for seeing some of the potential issues. But to be able to jump right in and be an effective advocate and assistant. When it comes to, uh, best representing the interests of constituents of the Altadena Library District. And that's just a, a quick summary because I can go for hours, so I think perhaps going to the questions might be the best idea.
Okay, I'll pivot, thank you Renee, I'll pivot it over to you, Jason.
Okay, uh, thanks, thanks for being with us Renee, so, uh, question number one. Uh, trustees are public officials who prepare for, attend and participate in scheduled board meetings. Uh, perform committee work and attend library and civic events. How do you plan to balance your life and other demands on your time, uh, with these obligations?
So that's, that's a great question, Justin, and it's good to hear your voice again. Um, long story short, um, I thrive on community service. Um, I realized that when the idea of that banner first occurred to me and the idea. Of being engaged in the challenges that Altadena faces, um. Um, many people really do not understand how long and hard this road is going to be. Um, it is, it literally is gonna be a long, hard road. Um, and for me, again, as I mentioned, this is the sort of thing I thrive on. Um, it is one thing that I have found myself using, helping others in the community in recent days, um, both physically and, um, I, I hate to say spiritually, uh, has been, um, the thing that has helped get me through this. Um, I, I feel most energized when faced with challenges, and that has been the case in the Altadena community for more than a decade. Um, I realize that the, the list of activities that I'm involved in isn't actually up to date because I'm doing so many different things in the community, um, that I, I, I'm, I know I'm not right, that I've left things off of that. I just recently came off of a, um, a CASA situation, court-appointed special advocate for a child in, uh, the dependency court system. He was successfully adopted by his foster care folks. So I actually have more time. In fact, I hate to say it, as the year ended, I was wondering, gosh, I finished up all these various projects, Operation Santo of the Pasadena J C's, this, that, and the other thing. What am I gonna do next? And I hate to say that I'm a little bit worried that the fates decided to throw a real challenge my way. So this is not an issue for me as it might be for other people. I run my own businesses. Um, I, I have the opportunity to set my own schedule. And because I am trained as an attorney and been an, an advocate and community activist for so long, issues like board packets, you know, a few hundred pages, I'm through and have studied those, um, in, uh, uh, a fraction of the time that it would take others. It's just what I've been doing for the last thirty years or so. So it, it's a great question. It's something that now more than ever, I'm energized to participate in and see through to its fruition.
Great. Thank you. Uh, Katie?
Hi, Renee.
Hi.
Can you tell us what library programs and services you personally use and value and why?
So that, that's actually a great question because it's been one of those where brain fog kicks in. You know, beyond simply checking out books and DVDs and quote-unquote the usual stuff, as I heard, um, uh, have a, a chance to think about it, things like the Fab Lab and, uh, being able to remotely, uh, start the fabrication of cool, cool things, just for fun. Things that are no longer in existence since my home, like so many others, burned. Um, but beyond that, I've, I've had the opportunity to participate in so many of the, the fun aspects. Uh, we heard about Taste of Dina. Um, I've, you know, participated in that as, as a guest, um, a few times and the concerts at the library. Such great community building events that I, I love and like to see on an even greater scale throughout the community. And now with the destruction of some of the facilities that were previously used, the, the fact that the building of the library is there, uh, provides an opportunity for it to become even of greater focus. But more so than that, I've had the opportunity to personally use, um, the library, a conference room where you folks normally meet to provide presentations to members of the public on, um, aspects, for example, with the Xerxes Society for whom I'm an ambassador. Uh, the, the issues facing monarch butterflies, uh, how to, um, uh, support, uh, pollinators, et cetera. Um, that is something that, that, uh, it is something I've used. And beyond that even, um, the mobile library, the, uh, Discovery Connection, uh, van have shown up or been scheduled to. Ha, there was one, um, hopefully this, uh, coming weekend, um, that, that simply can't happen anymore. Uh, but through things like the Altadena Community Garden and other events, I've managed to have, um, the, that come out and be part of a, a greater community outreach. And that's been wonderful because now more than ever, our community is going to need that. And again, as I mentioned, with the challenges facing the library, just in terms of having enough staff, enough money to pay staff, um, these are, these are critically important times. So, next question, please.
Hi, Renee. Our reach to and engagement with the community is vital. I think you already touched on this a little bit. Especially as the Altadena community recovers from the devastation of the Incan fire. And as the library approaches closure of the main library for renovations, how would you serve as an ambassador for the district? This might include other public agencies, other support groups, community partners, and others you have in mind.
So, thank, thank you. And that, that is another great question. Um, and I think I am somewhat uniquely poised for good and bad reasons, if you will. Um, good reasons, my involvement and engagement with so many different organizations, serving as an ambassador for, like I say, the Xerxes Society, for, uh, a Rotary, uh, program called Operation Pollination. Heck, even for, um, NOAA, the National Oceanic and Atmospheric Administration, and their is- their up, their, their attempts to get accurate information out to the public. I, I serve in so many capacities with so many volunteer groups and agencies, um, that there's a lot of cross-pollination, pardon the nonexistent pun there, um, to get information out to the community. But, but more, more to the point, um, on the local level, um, I am a long-term, um, um, uh, lead, as they say, a founder of the James Village neighborhood on next door. Um, strangely enough, you'd think that a devastating wildfire situation, uh, in a community would start to see a reduction in, uh, uh, membership in a neighborhood-based, community-based social media platform. Instead, it's seen a, a, uh, tremendous increase to the point where, um, many of my recent posts regarding what's going on, uh, have seen in excess of ten thousand local reads. So I have that opportunity. But beyond that, um, you know, I, you, you can search and Google my name and see the various, uh, opinion pieces I've written. Um, you can see literally my name all over town, uh, on, on projects I've been involved with. And of course, recently and tragically, um, that's the dark aspect. Um, CNN, I had a, an eleven-minute, uh, interview during their breaking news, um, period. Uh, I didn't realize that's what it was gonna be. Um, they also did a deep dive, uh, coverage on, uh, the, the people who are Altadena and featured me there. So I, I literally have a, a, an extensive network of, uh, folks locally, um, who have found me. I'm a, I, it's weird to say, I'm a next-door fave. Not because I'm a great business or anything like that, but because people like my posts and they find it a great source of information and I get messages back and forth. Thank you for posting this. It's so helpful. Or thank you for posting that. I really needed to see that right now. So again, kind of a unique position, if you will, from the hyper-local to, you know, from, from people on my street to people throughout Altadena, throughout Southern California, throughout the nation and throughout, across the globe. Um, I have the, the ability to have direct contact with those, uh, which is something that again, given the status and future of Altadena as a community and certainly the Altadena Library District and its finances, we're gonna need.
But your, your time is actually up now for this question.
Don't worry. Thank you.
Thank you so much, uh, for being here, Renee, and answering our questions. Catalina, who do we have next?
Our next candidate to speak is Tina Lerno.
Hi, Tina. Are you there?
I am here. I'm unmuting and
Hello.
My, my face up here. Hi.
We hear you. Um, okay. As you are aware, you have three minutes to introduce yourself and talk about your, um, interests related to the board and then some questions.
Okay, that sounds great. Um, thank you for putting this together. And I am gonna do everything I can to not cry, but I might. Um, my name is Tina Lerno. Um, I ran for the board seat that was open for my little district too. And so I was thrilled to see that this was a further opportunity, um, to be, to be on the board and serve the board. Uh, I'm a born and raised, uh, Angelino, first generation. Um, I lived in Altadena for six years and then went away for a couple of years and came back, um, as a proud homeowner. And, um, I just love Altadena and, um, I knew I shouldn't have said that. Oh, okay. Um, I'm, I myself am a librarian. I've worked in, uh, public libraries for fifteen years. Uh, I worked for the Los Angeles Public Library. And in the past, I've worked for county. I worked for smaller districts like City of Azusa, San Marino. Um, so I've worked with both a large library system and a small library system. Um, and I came to librarianship, uh, and community service as a second career after working in animation, raising two kids. Um, and I feel like librarianship is the culmination of all those previous jobs, um, including mom. And I do tend to, uh, now that my kids are grown, I, I kind of mom, mom at some of my other, uh, jobs, but, uh, that's just what happens. Um, I think the fires have affected us all in so many ways. And the one thing that's risen to the top that I hear over and over again is community and the importance of community. And we may not be an incorporated city, but, but we are a true community. Um, and I think Altadena Strong is a perfect way to describe us, so. Um, I also wanted to say my goal here is not to be a librarian. Um, Altadena has, uh, public library, has some amazing librarians already here. Um, I just wanna be able to support their needs and the community's needs, uh, representing them and serving in any way that I can. Um, and I think as a, as a librarian myself, I have a unique skill set, uh, to be able to do that. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Tina. Thank you for being here. Jason?
Okay, thank you. So question number one. Trustees are public officials who prepare for, attend and participate in scheduled board meetings, perform committee work and attend library and civic events. Uh, how do you plan to balance your life and other demands on your time with these obligations?
Um, well, since my day job is librarian, I'm not really, I don't think I would be taking my hat off at the end of the day. It's more like I would be putting my cardigan on, um, for this, for this opportunity. And I've also served on many library committees, roundtables. I'm, uh, a member-at-large right now for the American Library Association and I'm going to their midwinter conference tomorrow. Um, and through, through my nine-to-five job, I've always been able to manage these sort of extracurricular library opportunities. And I don't see that that would be a problem here and, and I would be able to fulfill my time easily. And my library knows that I'm, my job knows that I'm doing this and, and they are very supportive of me, so.
Great. Thank you. Katie?
Hi, Tina. Um, can you tell us a little bit about the Altadena Library programs and services you personally use and value and why?
Um, well, I feel, I, I almost feel like it's a bit of a cheat as a librarian. I've used lots of different programs over the years when my kids were little, Storytimes. Um, I can't believe nobody mentioned summer reading. Summer reading is like the greatest thing ever. Um, and not just for myself. My kids have, uh, my daughter, uh, volunteered with summer reading. Um, and that's an amazing opportunity, uh, to be able to serve the community in that capacity. Um, I work at my library. I'm a part of our digital content team, so I work behind the scenes. I work on our website, updating events, that kind of thing. So, uh, I do a lot of computer work behind the scenes for the library and I enjoy anything that, that is tech-related, um, and those sort of STEM programs that, that I know Altadena also, um, values and, and has. Um, I've been to Taste of Dina and I think that's an amazing program. Um, concerts, uh, book clubs, there's just so many things, uh, and ways to be a part of the library. Um, and as to why, um, it's a way to support the community and to give back. Um, and I think as a library, um, the li- the library is such a trusted place and it's such a safe space. And I just want, uh, I want that for everybody. I want, um, those things to come across for, for our community, right? I'm sorry.
Not at all. Thank you, Tina.
Good seeing you again, Tina. Our reach to and engagement with the community is vital, especially as the Altadena community recovers from the devastation of the Incan fire. And as the library approaches closure of the main library for renovations, how would you serve as an ambassador for the district? This might include other public agencies, other sports groups, community partners, and others you have in mind.
Um, I think, again, as a librarian, I have, um, the different types of connections, um, that others may not have. Um, I feel super comfortable reaching out to the larger community. I'm very involved with ALA, CLA, uh, which is the American Library Association and the California Library Association. Um, and I've also built strong relationships with neighboring library systems like Pasadena, City of LA, obviously, who I work with, uh, work for, and also county. Um, which has some very close locations to, to Altadena. Um, also, uh, school groups is another way that I could support. My, uh, kids went to schools locally. My son was at Odyssey and, uh, when he was, uh, Odyssey North. And when he was little, they would do Storytimes. Uh, they would walk to the Bob Lucas Branch. Um, and, uh, I've also worked closely with library foundations. Uh, with our own foundation, I've planned large-scale events, uh, for our library and have re- reached out to both, uh, friends groups, uh, the foundation, uh, comm- schools, faith-based groups, uh, and I've also, uh, have some pretty good relationships with vendors, uh, such as Brain Fuse, people that, you know, um, I think could really help. Also, State Librarian Greg Lucas. Um, and I just wanna be able to use those connections to, um, help the library. And I do, I just wanted to say, sort of in response to what Renee had said about the library losing its funding, um, I truly believe that the library, community and the state is going to, to help and do what they can. And I, I wanna be there to, to help make those connections and, and to do whatever we can. And I know the library is, um, is on everybody's minds in Altadena. And, and I don't think we're just gonna go away as a, as a place with the public's mind. So, um, I'm confident that, that we will find a way.
Thank you.
Thank you so much, Tina. Okay, Catalina?
Okay, I have our final candidate here, who's gonna be Mark Josephowitz. Again, correct me if that's not the correct pronunciation.
Uh, Josephowitz, uh, but I've heard Josephowitz many, many times in my life, so. It doesn't, it doesn't bother me too much. Uh Joseph Oates, uh but I've heard Josephowitz many, many times in my life, so it doesn't, it doesn't bother me too much. Uh hello, everyone.
Mark, welcome. Um, as you have heard, uh you will have three minutes to introduce yourself and your interest in the trustee position. Um, and then our trustees will ask you some questions.
Uh, okay, great. Uh, so yes, my name is Mark Joseph Oates. I'm a filmmaker. I'm originally from Michigan, uh and Ray, you might guess that I grew up with Motown and I love David Ruffin, so that was a a nice little surprise in this call. Uh, I've lived in Los Angeles for, or the Los Angeles area, rather, for over twenty years now. Um, I prepared a statement, uh and I I realized that I'm the only one who did that, so I hope this does not sound too stiff for everybody. Uh. I have clear memories of happy visits to the library when I was a boy, either for storytime or music shows, or just to pick out books. As a high school student, the library was a quiet place to study and try to focus on my homework. As an adult, excuse me, as an adult, I took advantage of the then somewhat new online catalogs and hold systems to reserve and borrow interesting books. More recently, several years ago, my family and I moved to Altadena, a town I quickly grew to love. From the small-town feel to the network of families, to the excellent parks, to the diversity of our neighbors, it was the best place for us to be, even if we didn't quite realize it yet. I believe part of what makes Altadena unique is how central the library is to the community. I happen to be a parent of two small children, so I visit regularly for storytime, art shows, music performances, crafting sessions, foreign, excuse me, foreign language instruction, you name it. But more than that, our library is a town square of sorts for all of us. I remember being annoyed at first how difficult parking could be around the library during community events. But then I realized that was because the whole town was coming out. Nowadays, when I go to the library for any reason, I know I'm always going to run into friends and neighbors, and it's a comfort. In short, Altadena makes us feel like we're part of the same village, and the library is the whole village's mother. I love being part of that, and I want to do more. In light of our recent wildfire devastation, I believe it's more important than ever to help each other, to offer necessary guidance and services, some of which people may not even know about, and assist in the town's recovery effort. I also believe it's important to show that even after a disaster, our library is doing business as usual, so everyone knows they can count on their institutions in times of need. I believe in the mission of the library, and I believe in Altadena. For those reasons and more, I would love to be a member of the board. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Mark. Jason?
Hi, thank you. Thank you for joining us this evening. Um, so question number one. Trustees are public officials who prepare for, attend, and participate in scheduled board meetings, perform committee work, and attend library and civic events. How do you plan to balance your life and other demands of your time with these obligations?
Well, uh as it is, I already attend some of those events. Like I said, we go there with my family for different shows and storytimes and 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 different things. So I'm already at the library for some of that stuff. Um, but beyond that, uh for several years now, like a lot of other folks, I've been working remotely, and I can, to a certain extent, arrange my day as needed. I can take breaks for whatever things that I need to do as they crop up during the day. And like Sandy, my wife actually encouraged me to apply for this position on the board. Uh, she and I have traded sort of tasks and tried to make our schedules work together, um for the last few years particularly, since we have two kids. Um, and even when I was working uh kind of a a more structured schedule, you know, ten-hour workdays, I would still always be able to find time to to uh take my kid to school in the morning, pick them up after school, so um I don't think I'll have any trouble managing the library commitments, too.
Great, thank you. Katie?
Thanks, hi, Mark.
Hello.
Um, can you tell us what Altadena Library programs and services do you personally use and value and why? And I know you've talked a little bit about this, but.
Sure, uh I mean, I don't want to just make a laundry list. Obviously, everybody loves books. Um, since we, I've had kids, we use the Libby app constantly, uh getting audiobooks for the kids. Um, number one, it keeps them occupied, which is always uh a a nice uh moment to relax. Um, you know, I definitely believe it helps their comprehension and sort of selfishly, it's um it's an easy way for me to introduce them to books and stories that I loved when I was a kid. Um, we've used all kinds of different uh resources at the library. We've gotten a laptop from the Library of Things. Um, we've gone to, like I mentioned, a lot of the child events, you know, it helps with their uh education and also our our younger son, you know, it helps with his socialization. Um, we've used some of the more s- dry, if you will, uh services there, like we've used the notary a few times, you know, with help with um whatever paperwork we need as homeowners or as a family that has more than one um country citizenship, when we have to send official documents back and forth, all the way to um you know, basic stuff like using the printers for unusual print jobs or just making copies. Um, and as, this is not really me, but my wife hosts a support group in the community room.
Great, thank you.
Hi, Mark. Greetings from seven through four. Outreach to and engagement with the community is vital, especially as the Altadena community recovers from the devastation of the Incan fire. And as the library approaches closure of the main library for renovations, how would you serve as an ambassador for the district? This might include other public agencies, other support groups, community partners, or others you have in mind.
Uh, sure, so eh our family is naturally involved in a lot of other local groups and agencies, which, you know, always leads, it seems, to public outreach and mingling, uh you know, even smaller stuff like um Facebook groups, like Buy Nothing, you know, obviously, we're very active in that. Um, we are members of the Pasadena Jewish Temple and Center, unfortunately, which we all recently lost, but um that's obviously a huge part of the local community. Um, my wife and I have been involved at different times in the Safety Council and trying to work um work with the county on traffic control in the area. Um, I volunteer with my kids' school groups, you know, even little stuff like coming in to read books or work on the school play. Um, and also, our younger son uh is at a co-op, so I'm naturally, both of us are naturally involved in the day-to-day sort of scheduling of the of the school and um working with the other parents. Um, we've even um arranged uh meetups with other parents and kids from our preschool to come, excuse me, come attend the um the toddler storytime at the Altadena Library. Um, we've availed ourselves of a lot of different um social services, uh like the regional center and early start for um for our child's development help, so we're just, it seems like we have our our fingers in a lot of different um local groups and um wherever I go with these other, you know, agencies and endeavors, I always sing the praises of the library. And uh I consider it a a go-to for resources or, you know, group meetings, um trying to get events. Um, I I I combine, I guess you could say I combine these other circles uh in my life at the library whenever I can.
Thank you.
Thank you so much, Mark, for being here, sharing with us. Um, okay, Catalina, I heard you say that Mark was our last um interested candidate?
That is correct.
Okay. So, um, thank you all for being here and sharing with us. Um, definitely gonna make this difficult on us, but I will now open it up to uh trustees to discuss and make any nominations if you are ready to do so.
I I, you know, several of the candidates said this, but I just with all my heart, want to thank everybody for being here tonight. Yeah, I've been in a a good headspace the last few days, um. But it was definitely tough to to get through this this meeting, and just it brings back a a lot, so um. Yeah, a big thank you to everybody.
Yeah, I would I would echo that. Thank you so much for being here. Um. It's such a hard time right now for everyone, and I just really appreciate all of you being willing in the midst of everything else that's going on and all the many, many demands I'm sure that you have on your time. Um, that you're that you're here with us. I am so bummed that we can only select one person out of the seven of you who are here, because I think any single one of you would be an amazing addition to this board. Um, I don't think that there is a bad choice in front of us, and I think that um the library is is gonna need all of you regardless of of whether, you know, you're the person um selected for the vacancy or not, so just please stay involved with the libraries, please stay involved with us if you're not already connected to one of the support groups, whether that's the Friends or the Foundation, um, you know, it's gonna be uh as as several people said, it's gonna be a long road, and we're gonna need you, and the library's gonna need you, so just thank you for being here. Um. Yeah.
Yeah, I just want to echo what the other trustees have said. Um, I'm still typing my my fire cough and uh um. Yeah. And it's been a, it's been a rough couple of weeks. So thanks for everyone's particip- participation, and uh we hope we can uh can make a good decision tonight, but I don't think there's a bad decision to be made, so. So I guess um maybe just to get the ball ro- rolling, um. I'd like to nominate uh Renee. Um. As someone who's been involved with our community um far longer than I have, and um has eloquently put uh a statement on some of the challenges that we're gonna see. Um, just like to offer him up as a as a candidate for the position.
Okay, thank you, Boone. Um, for your nomination, um I think Mr. Amy dropped off, maybe, or do I just not see?
I don't see him, I don't see him listed anymore. Oh, no, there he is.
Little number.
Yeah.
Right, um, so is there a second for this nomination?
Are we, are we? Are we going through the votes? Are we having discussion? How?
So, um, the way I understand it, and from remembering doing this before, um, we can have discussion, um. And then if someone, it sounded like, and correct me if I'm wrong, Boone, but that you were, when you said put him up, like that you were nominating um him from my conversation with Catalina, and jump in here, Catalina, to make sure that we we have it right. Um, you know, it's open discussion until someone makes a nomination, and then we, you know, proceed um as such.
That is correct. It's open discussion until a nomination is made, and then somebody, um you do ask for a second, there is a roll call vote. If three out of the four, the four trustees, um do not vote to appoint the individual put forth, then you start the process over again where you discuss. And then somebody, if they so choose, can again um make a motion to nominate an individual, and it'll, it just kind of repeats until somebody receives a majority.
Yeah. Um, Boone, did I understand right that you were, were you making a nomination, or were you offering Renee up in terms of like, you know, discussion? Um, of the uh candidacy?
Uh, yeah, I mean, we we can start the discussion if the process is to do the open discussion first prior to nomination, so sure. Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, I agree with everything you just said, Boone, I mean, thinking about myself and what brought me to this board, uh, you know, I have to acknowledge Renee's work in 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 the community as being part of that. I think partly because of everything we've talked about tonight, you know, what's going through my head is is thinking about that very long road ahead of us, right? Um, and even though, you know, this is just a two-year term to complete, it would be my sincerest hope that, you know, we would have somebody that would stick around for longer than that. Um, and I, you know, I you know, it's my understanding that this this is an open seat, but that essentially it would convert to district, a District Four seat at the end of this term, is that?
Well, it, so, yes.
Not exactly.
Well, ye- yes, technically, like this specific seat will convert um to District Four seat. But um districts three and four will be the ones that are on the twenty twenty-six ballot, right? So presumably, if the District Three seat is also open, um, then anybody from either District Three or District Four could run again, could run. But yes, this seat specifically will convert to District Four.
Okay. So I think, yeah, I mean, I, yeah, I think only one of the seven focuses in currently, well, has an address in District Four. But I just, yeah, it was just something to consider. Other other things that anybody else wants to bring up or consider before we do any formal nominations?
Um, I wanted to add in there something that kind of perched my ears up, and when I was looking at the packet, um. One of the things that we were talking about in the last meeting is um like who can sit on the different committees, and I heard, you know, that there's uh and I read, you know, Justin is a land use attorney, and that sounds very intriguing to me. Um, I had to Google that and make sure I understood, and I don't, you know, still fully know what that entails, but um. Yeah, that the experience and the background, I feel like, can be very useful um as we go forward with the projects.
Yeah, I'd agree with that, Camila. I'd also like to say sort of similarly about Ray's background in finance. I think that you know, we have a number of very complex financial decisions that are gonna be in front of us. Um, both in the short term and the long term, and having somebody with, you know, a strong finance background could be very helpful as well.
Any other thoughts or comments, discussion? I know this is challenging, and as we always say, super uncomfortable.
It's like the weirdest possible way to do things, um and I'm just, yeah, I'm sorry, everybody, it's a, it's a weird way to do it, but that's the brown act for you, what can you do? Um, yeah, like I said, look, I think everybody would bring something fantastic to the board. I really do. I don't think that we have a bad choice in front of us. I will say that I just, you know, because there's no other way to know this except by saying it out loud, I'm um finding myself leaning in favor of Ray and his candidacy. I think that he would be a tremendous asset to the board. Um. I'm happy to go ahead and nominate him when we get to that point. Um, obviously, Boone has also indicated a nomination he's willing to make, so.
Okay, well, then if it doesn't sound like there's more discussion to be made or had, um, we can move into the nomination um portion. Um. There any nominations on the floor, official, formal nominations for um the seats? the seats? Or the seat, not S.
Yes, and, and that would be a motion to nominate a particular candidate.
Boone, I'm not saying anything because I am, I am mindful of the fact that you had sort of gestured in that direction previously, so I don't want to step on your toes if you want to go ahead and make your nomination.
Yeah, sure, yeah, I'd like to nominate Renee for the board position.
Okay, so we have a motion to nominate Renee for the position. Is there a second? Okay. Catalina, I assume since there is not a second, that the motion does not carry, for lack of a better word?
Yeah, correct, the motion would not carry.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for your nomination, Boone. Are there any other motions for for any other candidates to take the open seat?
Uh, yeah, I moved to nominate Ray Ruffin.
Okay, is there a second?
I, I would second that. Nomination.
Okay, then shall we take a roll call vote? Starting with Trustee Capel?
Aye.
Trustee Clark?
Aye.
Trustee Lim? You're on mute.
Knee for me for now.
No thinking. I can say yes. Okay. Um, so that is three out of four. Catalina, next steps.
Uh, so, um, next steps, or is that a candidate has been appointed? As you'd have, that candidate had the majority vote. They will then be formally invited to our regular meeting on Monday. I know that's really, that's such a short time in between meetings, um, which will be another virtual meeting at which the beginning of that meeting, they will be formally appointed in this morning. Uh, as well as, uh, immediately tomorrow, I will also uh, give notice to the Board of Supervisors that we have appointed an individual.
Okay, all right. Thank you so much, everyone. Again, I want to echo what everyone has said earlier. This is a a really rough time, a rough process to do in a really rough time, so really appreciate you all for being here, really appreciate your interest in this position and I hope that you will stay interested and continue to go to serve the library. Nikki?
Uh, I also did want to point out that Catalina put together a PowerPoint orientation that I'm gonna review with her and we're hoping to connect with Ray ahead of the meeting on Monday night. Just to give some like more foundational information to him. If it's okay, I kind of would like to also make a statement before we um, end the meeting, just, I really want to express a huge thank you to all of the candidates that applied. It was very humbling to me as I reached out in the last, you know, week and a half to see so many candidates that affected whether they lost their home or not by this horrible fire and that were still so dedicated um, to serving their community as a trustee. I just, like, it was humbling to me, like, connecting with all of, all of you, so thank you so much. It really means a lot because we are gonna be faced with some pretty difficult times moving forward and just knowing that we have like a group like you that hopefully we can see and put to work in other ways in advocacy of the library district. It's just really important. I also want to thank the board. I know this has been a really challenging couple of weeks. Thank you for staying in touch. Um, and really, I've been taken aback by the community's support from both inside and outside. I've been going to briefings and meetings and connecting with partner groups and community groups and other government agencies and really the outpouring of support has been truly remarkable. Uh, my heart does go out to everyone affected by this horrible fire and I just want you to know that I'm personally committed and committed committing our staff uh, and our resources to do everything we can to help our wonderful community recover and rebuild. Altadena has been the biggest cheerleaders of our libraries, passing ballot measures and financially supporting the library. And, you know, we've existed almost a hundred years, so I really see it as our obligation to give back in every way that we possibly can. So, with that, again, thank you to everyone. I really appreciate all the support.
Agreed, and, um, congratulations to Ray and we will see you in a future meeting on Monday. Again, thank you everyone for being here. Uh, let me go back to the agenda. Okay, so we have, the next section in our agenda is the governance. Um, and under governance, we have board retreat discussion.
Yes, so, um, I have this on the agenda because I thought the board may want to discuss this. I know this is we have a tentative date for February twenty eighth. Um, but if you guys wanted to discuss dates or, um, topics for that particular me, uh, for the retreat, that's why this item is on there.
I don't know, I don't feel like, you know, there's not a lot for us to talk about, we're just kinda business as usual. No, I mean, so originally, as you guys will recall, we had, um, spoken in December, I think, about the idea that the retreat would be, you know, after the appointment of our, uh, board vacancies, so a new trustee could join us and also be focused on the building projects. Given the sort of complexity of the whole uh, the whole process, I think that that is still a pretty good idea. Obviously, circumstances have changed. I think by the time we get to that point in February, we'll have a little more information than we do now. But yeah, I mean, I, I think the timing still makes sense. Sort of late February, I think that gives us enough time to do some of the fact finding and consultation with the various consultants we have so that we can bring the board, you know, up-to-date information, um, and, and you'll be hearing about that obviously before then, um, including on Monday. But, uh, yeah, I'd, I'd suggest that we keep the same the same plan with obviously the understanding that it's a whole lot more complicated.
What? What date were we looking at again?
Friday, February twenty eighth, uh, the morning of the twenty eighth, I believe.
That's what I thought.
Yeah.
And then Catalina, what would be the cutoff for, because that's like an agenda that has to be posted, right?
Yeah, so it's a special meeting, um, so, um, we can post that twenty-four hours in advance in the meeting. Don't even have it on the calendar yet because it was tentative. That meeting will also be virtual because our, um, our resolution goes through like, I think, March fourth or something like that, so that's still February. So yes.
And, and generally in the past, and we can do whatever everybody wants to do, but generally in the past, there have been no action items at the board retreat. It's just been more of a chance for us to sort of take a breath from the business of regular meetings and how they go and sort of look at the big picture, get everybody on the same page, answer questions, maybe bring in, you know, experts, whether those are lawyers or accountants or capital teams or whatever it is.
And I don't think it has to be virtual. We could, we could explore that once we get closer to the twenty eighth, depending on everybody's situation. But I'm just saying, like, I would assume we'll be back in the library by that time, but we'll see what's happening and if, if people would rather do it virtually or in person.
Well. Did we want to lock down a date?
I think it's probably a good idea, just so we can plan on it. I mean, it's a special meeting, if we have to change it, we can change it, but I think the more advanced morning we have, probably the better.
And, um, what are the dates that you have projected? It's not the right word, my brain is moved right now. Go ahead, Nikki, so the date that you have suggested or some options, basically.
So we floated Friday mornings by the people that we'd asked to come speak. Uh, at, at that time, it, the plan was in person, obviously. Um, so both Christie Even and Jennifer Pearson are available on February twenty eighth, who I still believe both will need to be at that meeting. Um, so if not, I'd have to run other dates by them. The twenty first didn't work. And we could explore other days of the week, but it seemed like for the trustees that worked well in the past. So, you, you know, the, the main thing is that we figure out when the consultants can be there uh, and try to work that around the trustee schedules too. So if the twenty eighth works for everyone, I think that's a great date to stick with because I know they can be at that one.
Twenty eighth works for me.
I just blocked out my work schedule, so.
Yeah, it's fine for me as well.
Uh, I think it's fine for now.
Okay. All right, so two twenty eight, it is. Um, and we can hammer down top, we don't have to hammer down topics right now, please.
Is, is Ray here? Can we check with him too?
I think that Ray left.
Okay.
Okay. Um, okay, so we have, uh, a date, a potential date of two twenty eight. We can review topics um, as, um, we need to in the next meetings. All right, so Nikki, I saw that you put in the chat if there are any other candidates that wanted to make any statements, um, now would be a time that you are welcome to do so.
Well, I'll just say thank you so much to the board for having us all and I know this was a difficult timing and, um, you know, kind of an emotional time. Uh, but I just really appreciate the opportunity. Um, I think you all are great and I think you have a good, good candidate, so you're in good hands, sir. Uh, so just thank you again for the opportunity. It was really instructive and I appreciated being here.
Thank you. Nice to see you.
Nice to see you too.
And I'll, uh, I'll ditto everything Susan just said and just say, looking forward to, you know, working with everybody and seeing everybody in person in the future as we sort of go through this process over the next couple of years and please do, anyone, feel free to reach out if there's, uh, any way you think of that I could be, um, of help as you move through the process.
Thank you, Justin.
Justin.
Yeah, just as everyone said, thank you for this opportunity and hopefully we'll get back home soon.
Yes, hey neighbor, so.
Thanks, Andy. Uh, okay. Thank you all. Um, then we have no other agenda items. I can call this meeting adjourned at seven fifteen PM.
Take care of yourselves, everybody.
Yeah.
Thanks, everybody.
Same, thank you, everyone.